This meeting of Norwood City Council is called the order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Seventeen years ago today, our lives probably changed forever with the 9/11 attacks, so I think it appropriate that we have a moment of silence, not only for those individuals who lost their lives or the first responders who were ill from that deadly attack, but also unfortunately those who were affected in our city, our neighboring city of Cincinnati. So if we can have a moment of silence to remember all of the folks who were injured seventeen years ago, as well as those who were injured last week. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the August 28, 2018 meeting. They were distributed previously by email and the written copy is on your desk this evening. Mr. Clark?
Move to amend the agenda as stated.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Motion on the floors to amend the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the August 28, 2018 meeting. They were distributed previously by email and the written copy is on your desk this evening. Mr. Clark?
Move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Good job once again, Mr. Kears. The motion on the floor is to accept the minutes. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have one request to address council on agenda items, and that is Pastor Sonny James regarding the Economic Development Committee meeting. So Pastor James, that's the next on our agenda, so we'll have you speak to that. And then my understanding is you also want to speak on something other than what's on the agenda, and we'll do that later. If you could just speak to the Economic Development Committee meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue. I contrary to popular opinion, you know, I always try to find something good in everything that happens even out of something bad, even if it's just something that we can grow on. And I had the privilege of attending one of our committee meetings recently, and I was very pleased to see the chairperson, Mrs. Stevenson, to address residents that may have complicated issues, emotional-driven issues. And I witnessed the chairperson challenge herself to meet the challenge for the residents. I was very pleased in it because as we look for growth, one of the biggest issues that I have is lack of transparency. And as I stand before you today, I can honestly say that that committee meeting, no matter what side people were on, the left or the right, what have you, it shows that as a people and as a community, we can grow. We may not always agree. We may not always see eye to eye. But if one person would dare to be bold enough to stand and stand against the status quo, I think this city could be a tremendous place to be. Now with that, on that day, one of the items was talking about a quality of life, which is an initiative that's being presented to our community as a way to advance our community. And I just wanted to stand publicly, because a lot of times it doesn't matter what I seem to say, there's an energy still in our community that desires to find something wrong, or pick something wrong, or search out something wrong. But the reality is, myself and my family, we love this community. We love the people in this community. It's just that our community also is plagued with a long history that we still fight against. But I'm not here to bash any of the community initiatives. I just want to make sure that that committee makes it a priority for transparency. Not transparency talked about through other committees, other subchapters. I think it's time that we be bold enough as a community and as a people to call a spade a spade. And transparency is very, very key. So I just wanted to say to the residents of Norwood, those of you who think like I do, you may not always be pleased with everything, but I think the chair and the committee members were at least bold enough to take a step in the right direction, to bring the residents together. All they can do is invite. They can't make you come out. But if you say you want change, and we have folks on this council, and I want to commend that committee, you guys did an excellent job. And the chairperson, I've been here a long time, and I've been arguing and fussing and fighting. That's the first time that I've seen, with the exception of Mrs. Hanahan, at a regular meeting, actually show that they may not be always in agreement, but they keep coming back and sitting at the table so that we can grow as a people. So I wanted to publicly stand and say thank you to the chairperson of the Economic and Community Engagement Committee, that if we continue to attack these issues head-on and not hide behind them, I'm confident that we will continue to grow. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you to that committee. And again, whether we agree on everything or not, that's not the issue, but we're bold enough to stand together as family and as people to at least address those challenges. So I wanted the residents of Norwood to know, those that have contacted me and asked me, I support the efforts of that committee and what they're trying to do. But the only challenge would be, please, as we engage under the title "community," please insist that we address transparency separate, because Norwood has a long history of issues that we a lot of times want to put under the rug. And we can't do that if we want to grow, because everybody has a right to know where we've come from, but then everybody has a right to participate in its growth. Thank you very much, and keep growing. God bless.
Thank you, Pastor James.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to reports of standing committees. The Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee regarding committee goals. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, we, your Committee of Economic Development and Community Engagement, to whom was referred our committee goals explicitly in our last, well, not our last, but in a former regular meeting, William DeLuca Commercial Property Location, 3370 Montgomery Road, beg leave to submit the following report. As it relates to our welcome to Norwood, the Norwood Chamber of Commerce will consider our request on October 2 at their board meeting. Committee members will bring up dates and discuss opportunities in the city with the city web consultants at our next meeting. As it relates to small business in Norwood, Hamilton County Development Corporation's small business services were introduced by Catherine Fitzgerald and Bob Pickford through a Duke Foundation grant for $20,000. Bob is a designated small business coach focused on providing support to startup businesses in Norwood. Residents and small business owners can make referrals to Bob by calling (513) 631-8292. Flies are available to pick up from the Clerk of Council's office on the second floor of City Hall. The funding opportunity began on September 1 with a formal MOU with the City of Norwood and is scheduled to last one year. Quarterly and a final report on the business climate will be provided as part of the project. A second item under Small Business in Norwood, the CRE agreement I just referenced, was referred to our committee in compliance with Ordinance 18 of 2009, which was amended in 2019 to allow the Community Reinvestment Area Program to continue until otherwise revoked by council. The committee heard from the applicant and law director regarding implementation of the program, the process of administering the program, and opportunities for council to improve the resident builder experience. The committee will continue to seek out information and discuss council's role in the program, that is a combination of both Ohio Revised Code and City of Norwood regulations. As it relates to Norwood associations and neighborhood, excuse me, associations in Norwood, the Economic Development Action Group provided an update. The co-chairs Lonnie Elfenbein and David Spathold were present at the first meeting of the action group. Members discussed how to create more user-friendly policies and practices to support economic development, the revitalization of the Montgomery Road corridor, and creating an open house experience that provides an overview of how to do business in Norwood. Committee members expressed interest in collaborating on the open house event and will continue to hold agenda time to hear our action group updates. The Community Engagement in Norwood. Murals with Artworks was the first discussion of a proposed definition, zoning amendment, application, and guidelines for murals in Norwood. Artworks' founding CEO and artistic director Tamara Harkavy and chief programming officer Colleen Houston provided an overview of their program and feedback on the opportunity for Norwood to create parameters that allow for mural projects. Artworks will provide city planner Greg Ores with additional feedback for the committee to review at our next meeting. Our second item under engagement, we received updates on commercial sites here in Norwood. Of note, Quality Inn is now in the possession of the lender. The committee will continue to seek updates on developments, citations, marketing activity, and construction plans. Lastly, with regard to engagement, we had an overview of Opportunity Zones. It's a federal investment incentive in designated areas. Southwest Norwood, Ward 1 to be exact, from Hopkins to Clinney and from Montgomery to Xavier is an area that may attract investment, so more discussion will follow. And then lastly, as it relates to the quality of life planning process in Norwood, the next opportunity to engage in action groups is Wednesday, tomorrow, September 12, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Norwood High School, which is located at 2020 Sherman Avenue. Respectfully submitted, Leslie Stevenson, Chairperson, James Bonzal, John Brayden, and Eric Thompson.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. At the end of our meeting last week, we took a little bit of time to brainstorm how to create opportunity for more engagement when the meeting actually unfolds. One of the ideas that was suggested was to potentially meet more frequently and maybe even break out topics by development opportunities versus engagement opportunities. And so that is something that we will continue to think about and discuss. I also wanted to solicit additional feedback from residents. If you're interested in being more involved in a committee meeting for economic development and/or community engagement, please share your ideas. I have an email address on the city website or on the council website. You can also reach me by phone and would really appreciate any constructive thoughts on what's the best way for your input to be added to our discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. As a follow-up for your welcome to Norwood, I'm on the board of the chamber, so I will make sure that that discussion takes place and what they, which are asking of them on October 2, we'll try to push that along for you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to accept the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no second or third readings of ordinances or introductory readings of ordinances. So we will move on to introductory readings of resolutions. The first is a resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018. Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, I recommend that we have the first reading in its entirety and the second and third by caption.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that the Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018. Whereas the mayor of the City of Norwood and the Norwood Police Division have determined that Halloween trick-or-treat should be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio. Section 1, that it is the desire of council that Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018. Section 2, that a copy of this resolution be posted in accordance with Section 731.25 of the Ohio Revised Code, and that copies be distributed to all news media within this area. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that the Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018. A resolution declaring it to be the desire of council that the Halloween trick-or-treat be celebrated between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 31, 2018.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports. We do have one other request to address council on non-agenda items, and that is Pastor James.
Again, good evening, Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue here in Norwood. I am excited because of a number of reasons. But one of the things that excites me is the potential for growth and change. And I was recently asked if I had made a public list of folks that I personally support on this council. Let me go on record saying, by far, this is perhaps the most cohesive group that I have seen working together since I have been making challenges to our fine city and our city leaders in years. So I mean that, that is the God's honest truth, and so you got it directly from me. Now, with that being said, folks, we've got a tall order ahead of us. And I don't want to politicize the tragedy that's happened in our city literally just days ago. But I've been saying this for years. People that believe there are issues, whether they're real issues or not, a perceived issue is real to certain individuals. And as we see across our country, and now as we see in our city of Cincinnati, mental health issues affect innocent people. We as a community, we have a lot of hidden issues that no one has surfaced. Yet when someone like me stands up and tries to just highlight it so that we can get it behind us and we can continue to work as one, then it's looked upon as an evil thing or that it's nasty or mean. Yet when I'm in council chambers and individuals come up to me with their fingers this close from my nose, I don't have anyone standing up saying, hey, well, we can't do that to our residents. Or when people come up and say, our leadership in this community doesn't even return our phone calls. We don't have individuals. We have very few people that stand up publicly and say, stop your nonsense. And all I want us as a people to do, and I'm speaking this to all of our Norwood residents, because our history and our reputation didn't get this way because of strangers. The reputation in Norwood has been valid and real for decades. Yet we want businesses to come into our fine city. We want them to build businesses. But what I don't want them to do is to have their employees innocently targeted because of something some resident did 40 years ago, but we still walk that out today. And there are many incidences. When there are people coming together, please, please Norwoodians, don't single people out anymore. Let's be inclusive. For instance, when we did On the Rough Side, and we had our location set, then for that location to be canceled simply because I'm the one doing it, but yet we had another secret location planned, so the event went on. Or when fundraisers happen, and I'm challenged to say, well, why don't you prove it first? But four days later, we hold a fundraiser at our recreation center that brings $19. Guys, people in this community have great ideas, great visions. Or when our police department is challenged on something that happens, communicate with the residents' leaders. Get back with them. Let us not isolate anybody. Don't talk to one and leave out another. Let's talk to each other. Because if someone, due to mental illness on their part, misunderstands our desire to love each other, and innocent people get harmed in our community, all we're going to do is say, dang it. All we had to do is talk to him, talk to her. Please, let's continue to talk to each other. Let's start talking to everybody. Let's be more transparent, and that's the theme that I think I'm going to be saying for the rest of the year, transparency. We have mental health programs that my wife and I have pushed out, and you can go to any of the leadership programs in this city. And I have tons of emails where they've supported everyone else, but not one email has gone out to say, hey, we have first aid mental health training. Tell people about it. In fact, the only two people in this room now, Ms. Stevenson sent some emails out and we got response. Mr. Clark put it in the newspaper. We got response. But what it takes is everybody coming together and helping each other. Don't just help the programs because it's your buddy. And if your buddy makes a mistake and someone like me stands up and says, hey, he did wrong, don't hide behind that. And closing out, a couple of years ago, we had the Department of Justice brought to Norwood, and you're looking at the individual that that invitation was managed through. Yet just recently, a very wise individual, part of our city leadership, said, hey, Pastor James, the DOJ was brought to Norwood and they found nothing wrong. That's because when we sat in that room, everybody got together and said, hey, let's not highlight what's been wrong here in Norwood. Let's focus on the positive. Guys, we've got to be transparent to say what's been the problem so everybody can come up together. And that's all I want for Norwood. As you all know, my son has great aspirations to be a part of the leadership in this community. And I want to do whatever I can to help open the door that that old head of Norwood that still shows its face can die down.
Pastor James, when is the, are you still holding the first aid for mental health?
Yeah, we have scheduled the meetings. What happened was, I was trying to be committed to allow our Norwood residents to participate. So we sent out notices to those that are in position. And as I said, other than Ms. Stevenson and other than that newspaper, we got no support. So the group that was scheduled to come, they misunderstood the date for some reason. And so then I said, well, we're going to cancel that and we'll reschedule. Because the truth of the matter is, my heart is committed to Norwood, no matter what anybody says. So I wanted Norwood residents first, as opposed to me, as you guys already know, we can do whatever we do without any support of Norwood, because our stuff still goes on very successfully. But that's not my heart, so.
So will there be another training?
Yes. We have another training right now scheduled for the 22nd.
Of September?
Of September. All of the participants, though, know from me that if I want Norwood residents to have this training, I want Norwood first. But it's not fair to people who give of their time and give of their schedule, and then we have to cancel because, you know, it doesn't come through.
So what time? September, that's a Saturday.
Yeah, it's an eight-hour training. It's a $150 fee per person, which is paid for by SAMSA, so it's free to the residents. As many of you know, Chipotle has been a very awesome sponsor of ours, so lunch is catered and free to all those who participate. And most folks know that my email, if you don't know, it's pastorsonyjames@gmail.com. That's S-O-N-N-Y-J-A-M-E-S. My phone number is (513) 487-8843. Now however, my wife does run all of that, but I wanted to.
Times, times and place.
It's 10 to 6, and our next location will be at the Richard E. Lender YMCA. Now, let me say that, say this in all fairness. I've told the trainers that come down, again, I want these trainings for our Norwood residents first. And so I keep trying to push it back to give Norwoodians a chance to participate. But we're not getting any emails sent out. And if you have one person in Norwood, I don't care what organization they're head of, you ask them, hey, by the way, you guys deal with drugs and coalition, a community coalition? Have you sent out one request to support it? The answer will be no. But ask them to support it. Send out an email saying, hey, we don't want to see what happened. Not that that training's going to stop what happened downtown, but we have a lot of young people that do walk around with mental health.
And registration is through you, either through your email or through your phone number?
Yeah, if you contact me, if you want to get involved, then we will make sure that you get in touch with my wife Kirsten James.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It sounds like you're on the track of, I mean, I think we should just go ahead and send an email out to the Sunshine List and maybe.
We have a, we're having a committee meeting tomorrow of the Norwood Coalition. So it's everybody who provides services in Norwood. A perfect example. That's why I wanted to get all of the information so that all of those organizations can get that information.
Which they've had that information now for three months.
Mr. Bonzal, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Could we ask Pam, the Clerk of Council? Could we ask Pam, the Clerk of Council, or the Clerk of Council, to send an email out on the Sunshine List, just to kind of include that information? And I'll be happy to, if you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Bonsall.
Yeah, and we'll, I'll work with you to make sure everything's correct on it, so that we don't send out any wrong information, so, yep.
And I do want to say thank you to Ms. Stevenson, because she did do exactly as she said she would do.
Ms. Stevenson?
And the end result was on us, not on her effort.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Pastor James, for coming and sharing. What's the minimum number of registrants you need to carry on the training?
30. We have a backup of 46 people right now.
You need a minimum of 30 to sign up for the 22nd?
There, you have to have at least 30 participants. We have, right now, a backup of 46 individuals, who all understand, right now, I want Norwood there. These individuals will come on any date that we have, with the exception, there are a couple, one of which is one of the individuals that you referred. We have not, I don't know if my wife's talked to her back or not, and I don't want to say she hasn't, she hasn't. But I've made it clear to the trainers, I really, we started this for our Norwood residents. Listen, folks, we've adopted two gentlemen that have mental health. So this is personal to us. And if I see how important, when I walk the streets, just walk in the streets of Norwood, you see it walking. We've got to be more equipped. We know we've had incidences, even with our legal department, our, the law enforcement, dealing with some of these individuals. It's very difficult. So the more training you get, the more equipped you are to address these issues as they approach. So...
Is there a maximum number? Or if somebody from Norwood comes, aren't we going to bump somebody else out of the training?
Well, the ones that are, that are within our control, there are only four individuals that aren't, one of which, one of which is the individual that Ms. Stevenson referred to us. The rest of those individuals will come on any day that we set. Plus, we have other locations outside of Norwood already set up where they can go and do their training.
Okay, thank you.
But I really would like for Norwood residents and leadership to obtain this training. And it's not just that. It's whatever we do, whatever anybody does in Norwood, give everybody equal opportunity. If you send out an email for Quality of Life, send out an email on all of the awesome things that are going on in Norwood. That's all I'm saying. And let's just approach each other respectfully, so that we can dispel a lot of these myths in our community, because a lot of it is hogwash, but people still walk around saying, "Oh, I'm not going through Norwood." And that kills me, guys. "Oh, let's move to Norwood." "I'm not moving to Norwood." That's ridiculous. Norwood's a beautiful community, in my opinion. I can't speak for everybody.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Pastor James.
Thank you. And I also want to just say to Donna...
And you kept your promises to me ever since.
And I want to say publicly, I have been challenged on many, many occasions not to come in as a bear and growl. And that challenge came from Ms. Donna Lay. And I'm trying my best to uphold that, because one thing I know about Donna, and I'm not trying to personalize her, I know she loves this community. History proves that. So if I buck up against her, guess what I'm doing? I'm a liar, and I'm a fraud, and I shouldn't be listened to. So I try my best, but there are times...
You've been doing pretty well.
So God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Let's just keep moving forward, and let's just keep being a great community, but let's move it even better. God bless you guys.
Thank you. We have no other requests to address, Council, so we'll move on to unfinished business. I'd like to start just by letting, to kind of give you an update on the retirees' health care. I was informed that there are, there were some additional bills that have been processed for 2016 and 2017. So there's some health reimbursement and some C9 reimbursement that recently came to the city at the end of August. A purchase order was just signed today, so I expect that a check will be cut very soon and sent to Benovation, so hopefully those folks who did not receive their C9 payments in the first round for 2016 and '17 will soon get those. So to let you know, we, I've been working with the administration about how to wind down the current plan. The Millennium Plan, the insurance plan, has a renewal date of November the 1st. And so we have asked to have that extended for two additional months, for November and December, to cover the folks under that plan for the additional two months. At that time, we would no, no longer have that Millennium Plan, but folks would still have two years to submit medical claims. My husband was in the hospital in June. I have yet to get a bill, thankfully. So people, it takes a while for people to get bills, so we understand that. So we will have to deal with Benovation for the next couple of years for them to process those claims, and we'll look at the cost of doing so. I was able to get a list of the people who are currently in the program, as well as their addresses. So we will be sending out information very soon to those folks about the new plan, getting nominations for their appointments to the review committee. And then I'll be asking the mayor for his three appointments to that committee that will take us to the finish line with getting this new program started. So just wanted to give you an update on that. I've forgotten it, we're moving forward. I wanted to make sure we had a plan in place before I mailed anything out, because I'm sure our phone's going to ring off the hook, and I wanted to make sure we all, we all had the answers, so that'll happen soon. And then one other thing I wanted to follow up on was the truck's license for CBS. After the last meeting, the attorney who was, who had made the initial contact emailed our law department, our law director, Mr. Moore, and asked what was the status of it. And through our conversations, he let them know that we, Council, requested someone from CBS to come to the meeting. We, Mr. Moore gave him the date and time of this meeting, and asked that somebody come and speak to us specifically from CBS, who could talk about the health of CBS locally as opposed to corporate. And there isn't anyone here tonight. So I will follow up again personally and see if maybe somebody can come to the next meeting. So those were the two unfinished businesses that I wanted to report to you on. Do you have any other unfinished business? Mr. Braden?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to update this, this council. The last meeting, I brung up some unsafe traffic issues around Norwood View, and how we were concerned about some young people getting hurt. Since then, my understanding that Ms. Sabo has instructed our school resource officer, and as well as our, some of our Norwood Police Department have showed up, and they are blocking the, they're blocking the side streets that surrounds Norwood View, and allowing one-way traffic, and it seems to be working. I just want to thank, I want to thank Ms. Sabo, our superintendent, for enacting that, and our school resource officer, and also Norwood Police Department. And it seems to be working, and I just, I hope that it continues. And I just want to publicly, publicly thank them and let them know that it's appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Braden. I also had a conversation with Chief Kramer, who a couple of years ago had some good ideas about how to, how to control some traffic around all the schools. And so I have put him in touch with a couple of people on the school board, that it made sense that as they're redoing their buildings, and looking at their playgrounds and things like that, that there may be some opportunities to do some things with drop-off zones in the schools. So Chief Kramer will be contacting the school board members about that, too.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. And just to be clear, it's one-way during school pickup and drop-off. So they're not, you know, it's not, they're not making that a one-way all the time. When the morning they come, they shut it down one-way, while the kids are being dropped off, and also on pickup. So I think it's a great idea. I hope it continues.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Braden. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Bonsall?
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple of months ago, this council passed some, I guess, a resolution to call for curbside recycling, by Simple Recycling. They authorized the city administration to sign a contract to do that. And I'm excited to be able to announce the start date for that, which is going to be October 1st, which is less than a month away from today. And so residents are going to start getting notified through flyers. And well, before I talk about that, just the recycling program, it's soft recyclables. It's clothing, shoes, books, purses, toys, and there's some other items as well that can be donated, or to, or recycled, if you will, instead of thrown away. But the recycling program is provided at no cost to the city of Norwood, and at no cost to residents. And I think it's really important that people know that. The city actually has a chance to do, benefit in two additional ways. The city will get a small percent, like, amount per ton of stuff recycled. And then everything that's recycled through this program will count in our recyclables for Hamilton County. So it allows our recycling program where we can buy, we get credits, and we can buy material, you know, items that are made from recycled materials, like the benches that you've seen around town that say Norwood Recycles. And I think probably there's some playground equipment that could be bought. But there's some, you know, those benefits. And then plus, we're just reducing the amount that goes into landfill. So it's just a win-win for everybody. And, I mean, really, I'm just excited to, that this council supported that, and excited that we're going to get started there. The city administration's been pretty helpful in, behind the scenes, in getting all the necessary stuff done, and the law department as well. So, yeah, residents will get notified through fly, there's two postcards that'll go out. So there'll be one that's going to go out about two weeks before, so probably in the next week, two week and a half, residents will get a postcard kind of announcing the program to them. And then about a week before the start, they'll get another card that'll actually have some bags, recyclable bags there with it. So just really excited again for the opportunity here. I know I've had quite a few people reach out to me and ask me, "When's it starting? When's it starting?" Because they heard council talking about it. I know Eric Thompson and I have been talking, have talked about it behind the scenes, too. And I just think it shows, you know, providing this service to residents, especially when it doesn't cost the city anything. I think it's going to be a really great thing, a really great thing just for our image as well. So just appreciate your all's support of that. Looking forward to it starting, and if you have any questions, just feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsall. Any other unfinished business? Move on to new business. Any new business? Ms. Braden?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is new business or communications, but I just want to make everyone aware that we're not, I'll be out of town on September the 25th, our next council meeting. So any business that you, that we have, I just want to make everybody aware that I want to be here on September the 25th.
Thank you for letting us know. Gone fishing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. Go ahead and...
Your annual gone fishing trip. We'll put a sign on your desk or something.
Sissy Flyboys.
Thank you for letting us know, and good luck. You still owe me some salmon from last year, I think.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, yes, I knew earlier at the beginning of the meeting, you touched on this being 9/11 and the anniversary of the devastation that the country endured back then. I do remember that, because we actually had a council meeting that night as well. And there was discussion about, well, should we cancel the meeting due to the 9/11 disaster? We did move on with the meeting, and things took place as usual. And it was a pretty solemn meeting, and it was a pretty solemn time. Following 9/11, the country kind of came together. There was very little, you know, you, me-type attitude. Everybody kind of joined together as a country, as Americans, and worked like that for oh, a number of years. Everybody was a patriot. Everybody was proud of the flag we flew. But it seems like lately, the, it's become kind of tarnished. And the last few years, it's like the country has kind of forgotten what bonded us all together back then, and have kind of lost, I don't want to say maybe our values, but our respect for individuals, to a point where now it's nothing but backbiting, and he said, she said, this party, that party. And I just think it's, it's really kind of taken a turn for the worse. We went from a high point back in 2001, when that happened, where everybody was so proud to work together and be a part of this country. To a point now, we've got to a low point, where everybody's just trying to tear everybody down, and basically kind of ruined our country. As Pastor James said, you know, this council here seems to be working pretty well together. And quite frankly, I think everybody respects everybody here pretty dang well, as well as Pastor James. And we try to keep above board on most everything like that. But what I see from a, not our city, but the city that we're surrounded by, county, state, and feds, we've kind of lost the respect for individuals and for this country. I feel bad for that, because what this country went through back in 2001, we've kind of forgotten about. The sacrifice that took place back then, and what followed that, what followed that, when we send our guys off, and the number of people that we lost lives because of that, we've kind of lost our way. Now, everybody's looking out for themselves, social media, and it, it's very disappointing. It's like we lost our faith. So I just hope that we, at least here locally, can continue to be people of faith and people to work together and be cooperative, and that we can set an example for the rest of the country. And not to be on a soapbox, but I just feel that it, it's just not the same as it was back then. And we need to get back to that respect for this flag, for the country, and our fellow man. So, thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Any other new business? On your desks, I did leave flyers. The Pinheads Preventing Injuries in Norwood people are going to be doing another Safety Day on Saturday, September the 22nd. Unfortunately, Pastor James, I'm going to be installing safety equipment. Give me a drill. Saturday, September 22nd, you, for anyone who has children, if you have children, or you care for a child, or if you're a grandparent, or you have children in your home that are under the age of five, you can call and schedule your home for a free bundle to have it installed into your home. That number is 517HOME, H-O-M-E. You get a smoke and carbon monoxide detector with a 10-year battery, a safety gate, electrical outlet covers, cabinet locks, drawer locks, doorknob covers, bathtub thermometers, non-slip bathtub stickers, bathtub spout cover, a nightlight, emergency contact magnet, and some educational material. So if you're interested, again, 517HOME, H-O-M-E. If you want to volunteer, you can call that same number. And it's a very rewarding experience, as we help make all of our younger kids in the community safer. So I encourage you all to take advantage of that. Please? It's in the morning. We usually meet at the community center at 8:00. There's an education for those who haven't taken part before. So there's education for the installers, and then there's education for the people, the educators who go in and, so it's not only you get the equipment and you get it installed, but there's also an educator that goes into the home that kind of helps you with safety tips. At 9:00, and we feed you, we feed you breakfast before you go. And then they go out into the homes from 9:00 until about 12:00. And then you come back to the community center, and there's lunch. So usually, each group, each, there's two people that go into a home, the installer and the educator. They could usually do about three or four homes in a three-hour period. So it takes about 45 minutes a home, if you're good. Longer if I do it, because I'm a little more timid with the drill. So, again, 517HOME. Any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communication, and that is a letter from Auditor Jim Stith regarding revenue projections.
Dear Mayor Williams, attached is a copy of the Norwood Auditor's estimated revenue projections, withdrawing five-year forecast as required by the fiscal emergency plan. If you have any... If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call. Sincerely, Jim Stith, Auditor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President. I, I think it's worth noting, and Mr. Bonzel might have been bringing this up as well, but, um, we can see, like, a decrease in revenue from 2018 to 2019. And two of the major contributors to that, or that, um, building permit fees, um, are gonna be down a bit unless we have a lot of new construction come onboard, uh, in 2019. You can see a significant drop from 18 to 19. And then also, under other, uh, we're going from 471,000 down to 14,468. And I believe, you know, as far as that, it sounds like a pretty significant drop, but I believe that is our reimbursement from the SAFER grant, that we will not be, um, receiving that reimbursement for 2019. So that's, I believe, reflects that pretty significant drop, um, in revenue from 18 to 19 under other. So outside of that, everything pretty well flows, pretty well through.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar.
FYI.
I'm sure the Finance Committee and the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission will be taking a good, hard look at this as well. And to let you know, there was, um, somewhat questions about having a capital improvements, um, plan, and, at the last, um, commission meeting. And the financial pl, um, auditors said we needed to finish up some work this year, um, on policies and procedures, and then they'd begin working on that, um, capital plan. So just to let you know, it's, it's in the works. Mr. Bonzel, do you have a...
Well, yeah, I'm just gonna add to that, um, it's still something that we can work on now, and I did kinda get a draft of something together. So I'll work with Mr. Thompson, who's the Chair of the Streets and Infrastructure Committee in Parks, so that we can, uh, maybe see if we might wanna present something to council earlier to at least start working on it, uh, before they actually jump in and...
Sure.
Do as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floors to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move that be adjourned.
Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.